Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Taglia?
Here.
Mayor LaBrusco?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and JSA 10:4-6 at sec, notice having been published according to law, with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the flag? (inaudible) (inaudible) Okay. We're gonna go, I guess we'll go right into the presentation?
Sure.
All right, so we have a presentation this evening on solar power. A young gentleman named?
Michael.
Mike Palmieri?
Palmieri.
Okay, Mike, you're on.
Okay.
Is that projector warmed up, ready to go?
I'm plugged in, but I haven't fiddled around with that guy. I guess while, yeah, I guess while we're setting up the projector, I'll just give you a little background on who I am and why I'm here. So I'm from Bloomfield Township, currently a planning board member there and environmental commissioner for do varying things. This, however, is a separate pursuit of mine. For the last two years, I've been, along with others from Bloomfield, investigating the possibilities for solar, municipal-wide solar installations for the township of Bloomfield. Our main goal was to have the township investigate whether or not that was a feasible undertaking. So the presentation that I'm gonna be showing you tonight is a brief version of the research that we were able to put together. A lot of this is relevant to Bloomfield. However, I did have the kindness to change the title for you.
Okay.
It's gonna pretty much take to the basics of how solar works, look at some market background, also give context for where New Jersey fits into this nationally, a little bit of the policy and incentives, like tax incentives and New Jersey incentives for how the economics of it all work. And then finally, I'll end it with talking about how you can finance this. One of the big things that we ran into was the question of issuing government debt to be able to finance such a project. They tend, if you're looking to purchase them, be in the millions of dollars. And so what they have instead is where you're able to have a solar provider rent out your roof space, and you can purchase the energy that you produce at a lower cost than your current utility provider. That's called a power purchase agreement. But let me just get this going. So what we're looking at here is a basic lineup of what a solar energy system would be. The first thing's a polycrystalline photovoltaic solar module. Those are just the panels with the number one above them that we all see. The next one is the inverter. All the panels capture the energy as direct current or DC current. The inverter flips it back to alternative current or AC current, which is what our houses and outlets work on. From there, it's then fed to the meter. The meter itself is able to track how much of that energy is produced, and that's pretty important when you start thinking about being credited back for that energy production. And then finally, that'll feed into your main panels, the lights and switches. And I always like to point out number five, regardless of whether or not you have solar on your roof, you will always maintain a connection to your utility provider. Of course, you know, solar won't work at night, solar won't be able to produce all the energy if it's extremely cloudy or rainy week, and that's a common question that usually comes up, but you would never disconnect from your utility provider. You'd switch back and forth between the two. And then these are just some pictures, just to get a feel for solar. They can be put onto sloped roofs. They're coming out with different racking mechanisms which allow less vibration at the penetration point so that you won't break your roof warranties. That's a big question that comes up when you talk about possibly installing solar is the roof warranties that you have and how old your roofs are, weight capacity and such. This is something that would reduce the weight. As you see, there's three metal racks. They're sharing the middle one rather than having two separate racks for each row of panels. So there's some innovation here. Here's another, it's called a ballasted system, where it's hanging from the sloped roof. It's using a lot of the weight from the solar arrays to hold it down and therefore needs less penetration points than usual. And then this is a flat roof. Typically, they tend to be some of the easiest and least costly installations are on flat roofs and also aesthetically pleasing. For the most part, on a flat roof with a two-foot parapet wall, you would not, standing from the street view, be able to see that solar array. They're also much easier to install, so they have lower labor costs. And you can notice here, there's very few penetration points, if at all. This is another type of ballasted system where you see cinder block fit into those channels that are attached to the arrays. And so you have minimal puncturing of the roof, which again, you know, a big question is the roof warranties. This is an installation, you can always put them on land as well, so I'd like to show that. And this is a ballasted version of land. This is another thing that's been becoming more and more popular, which is a solar array over a parking lot, where you're able to provide, one, covered parking, two, the energy production from the solar arrays. And what that allows you to do, something that Bloomfield Township's exploring, is to set up electric carports and kind of prepare for the next decade. You know, most of the trade journals show that these will be more and more popular and affordable to kind of have your city become a hub where people stop. And always remember, while they're charging, people have to do things like shop, right? So if you can put it in a strategic place, they're great. And then finally, for snow removal, they're also great. You'll notice if you drive around, snow always melts off of a solar panel first on a roof because of its dark color, and so that's great as well. A lot of towns have been doing this. This is what an inverter looks like. They can be outside or inside of your building. They build both kinds of models. That's your meter that we're all familiar with, and that just brings us back to the beginning. I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly, this part, just to keep to time. I'm gonna try to keep this to 15 minutes. But what this demonstrates is the amount of, the percentage of power, new power, that's been added to the grid in the last few years. And as you can see, as indicated by the yellow and red colors, which indicate, red is small solar, which would be residential, and the yellow is big solar, which would be like the large utility scale, that it's a growing proportion of the energy mix in the United States. This as well is from the EIA, Energy Information Administration, which again demonstrates that in the last quarter of 2016, renewables actually outpaced conventional fossil fuels adding to the grid, right? This isn't the whole amount that we use, rather the new energy that's been added. Again, this shows some of the employment statistics nationwide have been growing at a pretty rapid clip. I don't want to get too much more into that. Like I said, we'll talk a little about New Jersey. It was pretty interesting when we were doing this research to find out that New Jersey's actually ranked fifth in terms of total solar capacity in the entire country. And as you'll see, it's not because we're the sunniest state, but because we have one of the most, I guess you could say, positive regulatory environments. There's a lot of incentives there to grab, and for that reason, people have been pursuing it. There was actually a report that was put out by the SEIA, which is a solar industry trade group, called Brighter Future Study for, on solar in U.S. schools. And what they noted was that New Jersey, if you look at the number of installations on schools, is actually second in the nation, only to California, which was pretty incredible. What they also noted in their report is an image I have up here. As you can see on table one, we are also second in capacity, second in the amount of schools. And if you look at table three, it's the percent of schools that could save money by going solar. It was pretty interesting. So these are schools that don't have solar, and it's kind of posed the question, if they did, would they save? And they estimate about 98% of schools would do that. I always take these numbers with, you know, with eyes wide open. It's from the Solar Industry Trade Group. However, it's well above 90%. Most journals would agree. Schools are also great because you're very large. They tend to be where a lot of the energies is used in a township. I'm not sure how Hackensack works. I know in Bloomfield, the Board of Ed has its own budget and the council operates something there, but they're looking to actually put a joint RFP out together. That's something to consider. Then just to talk a little bit about federal and state policies. So the question of what drives New Jersey to be one of, you know, the top five states in the country? There's something called a renewable portfolio standard, which obligates large utility providers to have a certain portfolio or energy mix. In New Jersey, you know, that mix goes from anywhere from liquid natural gas to coal to solar wind, right? And there's certain percentages. New Jersey has one of the highest renewable portfolio standards that actually has legislative teeth in the country. Likewise, within that RPS is something called a carve-out. So it's one thing to say, this much percentage of renewable energy by this year. New Jersey takes it a step further and says, this percent of solar, right? Specifically solar. And that's actually one of the highest in the country as well. So that's been driving it. What it does is it creates a demand at the utility level that they want and need to purchase these renewables, or they're fined. And so it kind of creates a market demand. Finally, New Jersey is well-known for its net metering, which is, if you ever talk to anyone who has residential solar, starts talking about their meter spinning backward, where you're actually paid for the production of your energy. That fine I talked about is the solar alternative compliance payment. So that's if you don't hit that renewable portfolio standard. These companies are charged. And in addition to that, there's something called an SREC, and that's a solar renewable energy credit. So that's what you would be, when you're paid for the production of solar, all right? And these are traded on an open market. Currently, they stand around $220 for every thousand kilowatts you produce. And as you can see here, again, New Jersey's one of the few states that not only has an SREC market, but it also allows for, it also has a carve-out, which creates that demand for the SREC itself. Finally, this is a pretty important one. There's an investment tax credit for solar, along with other renewables, but this one's the key for our discussion. It stands at 30%, but as you can see, after the 2019, that 30% drops off and then continues to drop off as solar gains a larger and larger market share. It's something to keep in mind. You might be asking yourself, well, for municipality, how would we ever be able to get an investment tax credit? It's a good question. You wouldn't be able to. But that gets to the point where I was talking about the power purchase agreement, where you would have a third-party provider, who is a private company, who can access that 30% tax credit, and then in turn, pass it along to you in a reduced rate for your energy, right? So that's why all this is, it is important, although it doesn't directly affect the township. And then finally, as I mentioned before, the power purchase agreement is the kind of agreement where a third party would come in, design a system, bring in engineers, look at feasibility, permitting process, and you would then enter an agreement with them to purchase the energy that's being produced on your roof for a rate lower than what you currently pay. This is just a schematic showing you how a power purchase agreement works. In this case, you would be the host. So the great thing about this is that there's no or very low upfront costs for towns. The main cost that I would always stress, if you were to consider something like this, is to hire a professional consultant to look through your paperwork, to make sure you're getting the best deal from whatever company you are negotiating with. Other than that, the companies themselves will not charge you for the feasibility study, nor will they charge you for the developing. It might sound too good to be true, but remind yourself of the last slide we looked at, where they're getting a 30% investment tax credit. Then in addition, for every thousand kilowatts they're producing, they're making a couple hundred dollars. Over the long run, they themselves have a very big financial interest to be able to provide these things for quote-unquote "free," right? They're not, they're not free. But nonetheless, it does get local governments around the whole constraint of asking yourselves, where are we gonna find a couple million dollars to do this kind of installation? This is one very popular way. So as like I said, public buildings can access that credit. You can lock it in with a lease, 10 to 25 years, so it's predictable. It's something you can budget yourself on. Historically, I'm not sure what utility provider Hackensack uses, but PSE and G tends to raise rates to 2.5% to 3% per year. So you can imagine the savings you would gain. They also, the developers also take care of the design and permitting processes, and they also will do the operating and maintenance responsibilities. If you were to purchase, that would be something you'd have to undertake yourself. You'd have to hire someone to maintain that. This is included in those agreements. And then one of the beautiful things is, let's say you do find a large sum of money that you can be directed there between the time when you sign that lease and before the lease expired. There tends to be a buyout clause in the middle of that lease period, where you're able to renegotiate and if so, you know, decided to begin to purchase the system. These are two of the most popular rates, the ways they do PPA's. So one would be, you start much, much lower than, or I'm sorry, you would just fix it. It might be a cent or two higher per kilowatt, but it will remain there for the entirety of the lease. And over time, the red line, the utility rate goes up, 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 and your savings is on the back end. Or you can get a much lower rate in the beginning, but it will slowly escalate along with that. It's pretty much if you want to get a huge amount of savings in the beginning and have it dwindle slowly, or start off with not much savings in the beginning, but have it consistently raise over time. Finally, I just want to show one case study. Like I said, this is a shorter version of what I showed. There's multiple townships. I encourage you to look at Ridgewood and Sea Caucus as two case studies I've investigated. But this is Wayne Township. It's back in 2014. These are the sites where they put it on. A couple of, it was most of their elementary schools and high school and middle school. And you can just see different varying designs. So here's a rooftop design, again, on their elementary school. You can see rooftop panels, more rooftop, more rooftop. But then you have something interesting here, because a lot of the HVAC that was on this roof, and I'm assuming probably because of weight restrictions, they didn't put it on the roof at this site. Instead, they have a couple of parking lot canopies, and then because they have this very large area, they also did land installations. So you can get creative, even if there's not roof space for these kinds of things. Again, you have a roof installation, but then also a parking lot canopy. If you look at the bottom of the image there, it's a parking lot canopy, and so on and so forth. You can see they really got creative with it. The name of the company was Nautilus Solar Energy. It may be a familiar name. They installed William Patterson's very large solar installation a few years back, and they were able to sign a 15-year PPA agreement. It's estimated to be saving about $400,000 per year, or $6 million over that 15-year period. And I was able to speak with the facilities manager, I believe he's still the facilities manager there, John Meso, and he talked about how some of the money went back into programs to continue to cut down on energy usage and go into educating. So this is more relevant to Bloomfield. However, I thought it would be useful to just kind of demonstrate what you're able to do. I'm not familiar if Hackensack ever had an energy audit. Bloomfield had, and we were able to kind of look at where that energy usage was. This is very helpful if you're thinking about solar, to look into it. But I'm gonna just click through it because it's not too relevant. One of the great things in terms of identifying locations for solar is just going on Google Maps and being able to click around and find where you have open flat roofs. Those are really, really great, or just open parking lots. These are from a report that was published by our township in conjunction with the Board of Public Utilities. There's actually quite a few dollars there available for free local government energy analysis, where they'll pay for a company to come in and do a free energy analysis. It's a state-to-state program through the BPU that they offer, and they'll allow you to construct what they call an energy savings investment program, which is like a revolving loan program. They'll give you money for upgrades, and you can also get very rough feasibility studies done for solar. So these are just images from that in Bloomfield. But we also took it upon ourselves to find some parking lots in Bloomfield as well. So this could be something that you can do on your own, just clicking through Google Maps and kind of drawing these polygons, starting discussions. And then to finish it off, again, this is more relevant to Bloomfield, these numbers, but there is an energy conversion calculator out there where you're able to look at what the savings would be like. So in Bloomfield's case, if they did go put a municipal-wide solar installation, it'd be similar to taking 427,000 gallons of gas off the road, let's say, right? So that's just something fun you can do. And it also brings up a point, I like to share a lot of these agreements when you do have the solar installation, is you can have these running charts put up on either screens or laptops for the kids in the schools, where they can be kind of lesson-planned around or used as educative tools, or even a website where citizens can go and look at how many dollars are being saved every day because of the solar. And that's it. I don't want to spend too much more time, so I believe it's a very good thing to look at. It did take some time. I do caution to really investigate the sites first, but also want to make clear that there are dollars out there at the state level where you can kind of do these feasibility studies for almost no cost. And Bloomfield is actually issuing an RFP. We're gonna, well, we'll be voting on it in July to issue an RFP in conjunction with other solar consulting firms to help us write that RFP. That's it. I'll open it for questions if there are any. If not, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
I have a question. Is there anybody that goes around and, I guess it might be part of the feasibility, to see where they can be put throughout the city, including schools?
Yeah, so for Bloomfield, the baseline information that we were able to gain were through the ESIP program, which was through the BPU, the one I mentioned. Something else that you can do, does your planning board or the town have an engineer on staff? Most engineers are able to at least give you the weight capacity and how recently the roof was put on. A general rule of thumb is if the roof is more than 15 years old, you're not going to want to put a solar installation on with another 15-year lease. So that's a great starting point, is just consulting your engineer and saying, hey, what's the weight capacity on our roof? You generally need three pounds per square foot for solar. And then also, what's the warranty on the roof? When does that run out? And that really gives you a good picture to start. Then from there, you can start calling firms to do these feasibility studies. They will do a rough feasibility study for free. That's an industry standard. Once it gets to the design and engineering, that's when you start going into a negotiation, you issue RFP. But the feasibility studies are, that's industry standard, to give you a couple of, this works, that doesn't. There's also a great open-source calculator. If there's any weird, kind of, not weird, but wonky people on the council or on the Environmental Commission, it's called NREL, N-R-E-L, National Renewable Energy Laboratory, PV watts, so PV-W-A-T-T-S calculator. And that actually allows you to use Google Maps, but also put information over there in terms of the power of the sun in that typical area, the square footage of your roof, and you can draw polygons, which will give you an estimate of how much solar you could produce. That's open and free, so that can, you know, that's something you can do without having to bring a consultant in. That's what we use to make our case. But, yeah.
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate it very much. And if, I can leave my email if you'd like.
Sure.
And I can send some of the documents for, you know, grants or things like that.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
(inaudible)
It's time to do that.
Bergen County, dude.
Do you need the projector?
No.
Yeah, you're not, you don't need the projector, do you?
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor and Council, Wayne Brizma, project manager from the City of Hackensack. I'm here tonight to talk about the open space grant for Carver Park. We are applying for, better put my glasses on, sorry. We are applying for a open space, I guess I should read the phone name, Recreation Flood Plane Protection and Farmland Historic Preservation Trust Fund through Bergen County. The project that we are looking at is the Carver Park basketball courts. They are located at the intersection of Clay Street and Second Street, over there in Hackensack. We're looking at $203,000 of restoration, and the grant request would be $101,500. The project, go to the second page, we're looking at resurfacing and acrylic finishes, basketball hoops, nets, and replacing some lighting and adding some additional lighting and electrical upgrades on the courts. That's pretty much it. So if you have any questions or anything regarding what we're applying for, I'm ready to answer those questions.
Do you have any questions, Wayne? Guys? So what exactly, on the courts themselves, what would they be doing, Wayne?
We'd resurface some of them. There's some, quite, some pretty sizable cracks and stuff. We'd do some crack, you know, sealing. We would mill some of the areas, and basically, we'd end up with a new acrylic finish with a, you know, restripped and a new-looking court. You know, we applied for the 100, but I guess we'd see what we get. And then we could scale the project down. We put in a pretty sizable request because we're always trying to get as much as we can, and then we'll see what we get, and then we can work it down from there. But this is the...
Could you give us any specifics on the lighting? Is it for the tennis courts or is it for the basketball courts?
No, it's for the basketball courts themselves. Yep. It's just the basketball courts. There's some existing lighting there that would be upgraded, and we will try and add some additional lighting in. And the service that's there, the electrical service is a little bit needed. We'd look into, you know, trying to upgrade the service there. And we'd go with LED lights, so we would save some energy by going with the LED lights.
Is there acrylic there now, or is it a different?
Yeah, there's courts there now.
You mean acrylic surface, or is it gonna be...
It's one court, I think, believes has some kind of an acrylic-type finish on it, but that does have some cracks in it. And the other two courts, I believe, are just in asphalt with a stripe to, so we'd basically be redoing what's there.
Okay. Thank you.
It's like a major playing court, like where you have the competition, and then there's more like two practice courts.
Good.
Good.
Everybody have the issues? Move forward.
Okay. Thank you. That was easy.
We have to open it up to the public.
Oh, public, okay.
We're doing it.
It's time, Wayne, I need a motion open to the public, please.
All opposed?
Sorry?
Who seconded?
Seconded.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public would like to come up and speak? Please do so. Good. Everybody have the issues? Move forward.
Okay, thank you. That was easy.
Have to open it up to the public.
Yep. Oh, public, okay.
We're doing it.
It's time, Wayne, I need a motion open to the public, please. Sorry?
Who, who seconded?
Seconded, I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public would like to come up and speak? Please do so. Just about this project, yes.
Regina, the Posco Parker Avenue. Um, was having trouble hearing, and we were debating about the electrical upgrade. Dated or needed? A little dated or a little needed?
It's dated, and, and if we upgraded the lights, we'd want to put in new electrical service in.
Okay, but you also said, well, if we don't get the money, then we'll scale it back. Then why are we doing this if it's not needed? I mean, if it's needed, it's needed, but if we don't get the money, we'll scale it back. Why can't we start out scaling it back? Why do we have to do more than is required, is needed? Well, because other parks need stuff to...
The LED lights would help with energy savings and then also viability and safety on the courts are what we're looking at.
Okay, but the electrical upgrade is because they're doing new lights, but like I said, you said, if you don't get all the money that you're asking for, then you're going to scale it back, which...
No choice.
Which...
We wouldn't have any choice with that matter. Uh, I wouldn't want to put new lights in and then have the electrical service.
How, how often are the lights used for basketball at night?
Over in that area, quite often, I believe, right?
Well, if the parks close, we're supposed to close at dark unless you have a permit, although you guys did something else as far as that, then, you know...
I can't answer that.
That, that's temporary. That was temporary. How, how much are the lights needed?
I think the issue that maybe you're trying to achieve is that when the city goes in to make improvements in a park, it really doesn't make a long-term success to partially fix them. I think what Wayne is trying to attempt to say, um, but maybe not communicating properly, is that we're trying to update all these parks. You have to start somewhere. So if Carver Park is the selected park and we're going to fix the basketball court, we're going to make the improvements for the lights, it's the prudent thing to do because just putting in a new basketball court that you can't utilize or function or blows the breakers or whatever condition that it seems to exist, doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
But the, Carver Park's been done recently. Anybody know, even know where Roland Park is? No, you don't know?
Okay, so let me ask this. Um, what activities occur at Roland Park?
Basketball.
Okay, well, we'll certainly go through, through the recreation department. They make recommendations, and obviously we try to put our best foot forward for the usage of this. How much Roland Park?
By neighborhood park besides, uh...
Okay, well...
You know, there's a wait time to play basketball there because there's not enough.
Okay, well, like I said, we're trying to make the best improvements that we can with the resources we have. Obviously, our grant writer, Pete Blanos, and the rec department goes out of their way trying to find, to stretch the dollar as much as we can to provide structured programs for these kids.
I would like to see it spent evenly, not all Carver Park and tennis and basketball. I'd like to see Roland Park getting...
Okay, good evening, and, you know, these grants sound good, but it's matching funds. We're looking at a hundred thousand dollars that the county is going to give us and a hundred thousand dollars that we have to put up. Um, Wayne, this area is very good. Can you explain and put me on timeout, what Columbus Park Basketball Court looks like and what kind of problems we have there and how in dire need it is an improvement?
I agree, I agree.
Hold on. I don't want, we're not gonna, uh, timeout. We're not gonna timeout, go back and forth. You can ask your questions and Wayne can write it down and then answer them after.
Answer the question, because Columbus Park is, is disgusting. It floods there, and we fixed it last year thanks to Tony and the owner of that property next door because the water was coming into the park. We have puddles. The kids can't play, they need a squeegee. They need to do, it hasn't been done in, I'd say, twenty years, twenty-five years. That's the priority. These kids can't play at all. Carver Park, you have everything, David, and you had it, you had it forever. And the, the lights, there's no breakers in those lights. Those lights are, are modern. There's, there's those, say to the art lights. There's no breakers on those lights. And we did, and we did that park years ago, and we did a nice job on it. We're spending eight million dollars on the indoor basketball court, and now outdoor basketball is everything basketball? I love basketball, too, but that money you better save because you're gonna have lots of problems at the M and M building. There's gonna be lot, it's gonna be more than eight million dollars because that, that's a whole disaster area.
We're only speaking about this park.
All right, but I'm speaking about our money, John. A hundred, you know, it sounds good, these grants, matching funds, we, the taxpayers, a hundred thousand dollars. Get the grant and get that. And then you have to pay bot, you have to pay an engineering firm to, to give us this thing. It has to be fixed. Engineering, seventeen thousand dollars to tell us how to, how to resurface the, the court? I mean, that's ridiculous. Columbus Park needs, we need drains in Columbus Park. We had them once, they did it cheap, the cheap way, and they left the drains out. That's horrible. Those people want to play park, all, play all the time. It's a big park, it covers the big neighborhood, and we're not getting it there. So re, and there's this, if you want to go for a grant, it should be in Columbus Park, not in, in Carver Park that gets everything. I guess if, you know, you're on the council, you get, you get, your court, your park gets done. Thank you.
Any else from the council on this? Seeing a motion to close in public? Oh, Wayne, go ahead.
I agree that Carver Park, uh, Carver Park is, uh, probably, uh, you know, in need of repair, and Columbus Park also is in need of some repairs. I mean, I've looked at both of them, and, uh, you know, this is the one we felt was the one to do right now, so.
Thank you, Wayne.
Motion to close in public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay, um, for discussion, intro to the ordinance for the Zabriskie Street redevelopment plan. There was a study, um, conducted by DMR to make sure, well, to see if, um, this area was in need of redevelopment. The investigation was done, and now it's reported that the sixty-eight Zabriskie Street redevelopment plan, redevelopment plan prepared by DMR is attached, um, heretofore, an Exhibit A by the reference made by the part approved and adopted pursuant of NJSA forty-eight colon twelve-eight dash act sec. This is to, um, uh, let's see here. For the city to move forward, um, with this project. Uh, Mr. Uh, Reiner has provided substantial evidence that this area of investigation meets the criteria enumerated in the investigation report, and this report will, once approved, will, uh, move forward.
We didn't get a copy of the plan in our...
I apologize, um, I will, if, if need be, I don't know what the timeline is on this. Obviously, I didn't put the book together. I'll have the...
We never got it.
Okay, so if we need to...
Is it on the docket?
It's on the docket.
Yeah.
So if we need to table it, if that's...
We have to. We don't even have it.
Um, I will make sure that you folks are all given a copy tomorrow. I apologize, but I did not know that that did not get, um, forwarded to you folks.
I wasn't sure if it went directly to you and they just bypassed me.
I mean, Fran usually makes a presentation. I assume he's going to?
I believe that's true.
Maybe we should wait.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Can I just say, Albert, will this, will this keep till? Well, the truth is, I don't have a choice, but...
I don't know that there was a vote scheduled on this tonight.
It's an intro, I think.
Yeah, there's an ordinance.
It's introduction to the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fran typically makes the presentation, which is scheduled, you know, it's scheduled...
Okay, so...
Just table it for next time.
I, I will table it, have it scheduled for the twenty-sixth meeting, and make sure that the mayor and council are all provided the documentation. My apologies. I did not know that they did not receive this. Thank you. Uh, number four is the discussion of the outdoor cafe ordinance. This has been, uh, bantered back and forth with the assistance of Mr. Kleiman, um, after looking at the document, um, the use of sound devices, except that at a times when outdoor cafe is in operation, audio speakers shall be permitted at ground level for playing music for patrons within the decibel range permitted by NJSA seven colon two-nine, codified in section, uh, one-twelve dash seven, the code of the, of the city of Hackensack. It gives the weight levels measured outdoors. The health officer or designated shall be retained. The discretion to deny or revoke permission of the use of speakers at any outdoor cafe when, in his or her sole discretion, it will, uh, detrimentally impact the surrounding properties or the public at large. Upon a request of the Hackensack Police Department, a license shall discontinue use of speakers until such time the health officer or the designated once again allows for their use. And this kicks in at ten PM, and then the, the, uh, ampli, amplification must be reduced for the noise level.
My question on that was that the ordinance doesn't have any timeframe, so I'm assuming that this is going to default to the timeframe that the outdoor cafe is allowed to have hours of operation?
Correct.
I think that's what you were saying, till eleven o'clock?
Right, so originally it went to...
But then from ten, ten to eleven, it would follow the standard noise ordinance for the fact that the decibel levels would change.
Right.
But they would be allowed or permitted to have the outdoor, um, speakers, the entire hours of operation of the outdoor cafe? Is that correct?
Correct, but once they reach ten o'clock, now the sound level will be reduced.
I have a question. Why, why is it at ground level only? Because there, there's some rest, we might have the possibility, we already have one place that doesn't have the ground level, and, oh, I'm sorry. I'm asking why it says ground level because with some of the new redevelopment going on, there's going to be some restaurants with possible rooftop restaurants that might have a, an outdoor area on that rooftop. Uh, why are we disallowing it on just everything but ground level?
Maybe Albert can bring some clarity here.
So, Mayor, just, just for clarification, this, this is the outdoor cafe ordinance. This only relates to outdoor cafes that are within the public right-of-way. So if you are a restaurant and you want to use the public right-of-way for outdoor dining, this is the ordinance. It doesn't relate, this is just...
So it doesn't relate to a rooftop or a terrace or something like that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Albert. Um, any questions or...
None.
Okay, so now we're gonna move to the, um, discussion in reference to the Atlantic Street Park Dog Walking Penalty Ordinance. Um, this was a discussion at a previous meeting. Obviously, the city and the use of the Atlantic Street Park for outdoor concerts and picnics and, um, you know, families to have events there, um, we have a problem with pet waste there. So mayor and council has asked the city attorney to put in a ordinance change which would exclude, um, animals, uh, basically dogs, to be allowed as, um, the Atlantic Street Park, except for guide dogs or service dogs. And the penalty phase was established, um, per your recommendation violations and penalties for any person permitted for a dog, for service dog, except first offense would be two hundred fifty dollars, second offense would be five hundred dollars, third offense would be a thousand dollars. Um, there's signage and postage at the park. The neighboring, um, building was noticed to their residence, um, so they're aware of the conditions. Um, we have our constable and our police department made aware of this condition, and we're moving forward with the enforcement component to make sure that that park is cleaned up. I know that our DPW has spent days over there getting the lawn, the gazebo, the painting, the...
Looks good.
Um, mulch. Um, I think, uh, we're getting ready for showtime here soon, and Albert Dibb has now... Go ahead.
Wayne had the presence of mind to email Fran about the Zabriskie Street. What's on tonight only relates to the cities, except the county had vacated certain rights of right.
No, no, there's also...
There's also an ordinance.
Also another one. There's two of them.
There's two of them?
There's three of them. There's two...
There's one for Jefferson Street, one for Zabriskie Street, and one for the project.
Jefferson and Zabriskie Street are about the county vacating.
All right.
This is about the...
So it's the third one that, that we're...
Right.
Go ahead.
Two twenty-four dash eighteen is the resolution.
Okay, so, um, obviously this will be up for you folks to enact if approved.
Do we have any information on costs and, uh, do we apply for grants and, on this?
Oh, we're, we're number six, you're talking about the dog park design. Um, I know that Pete Blanos has applied for every grant that we could possibly find, private and public. Unfortunately, funding seems to be, uh, issue for these, um, types of projects, and obviously a lot of communities are now, um, I don't want to say that this seems to be the end thing, so to speak, but, um, dog parks and, and this kind of community is certainly being supported, and they seem to be much more in vogue than they were in the past. So, um, we've attempted to, um, get grants to do this. Obviously, we have solicited some designs. Jim Megan and I have looked at the finances. Um, we're gonna put together the last of our capital improvements, and to follow up on the conversation about improving our parks, we're trying to selectively, um, find ways to get the maximum, uh, usage of our parks that serve this entire community. And by doing that, we're trying to basically, um, I think that, uh, some of the infrastructure in the city parks starts to get to the point that we need to put some, um, major infrastructure improvements in some of these parks. Um, one of the issues that comes up with STIB is obviously, uh, the bathrooms that are, um, way overdue for being, uh, we had a termite infestation that, that was addressed last year, and we kind of put a Band-Aid on it and had the, um, building tended, but obviously, um, the termites don't live there anymore, but the, the damage still does, so we're gonna have to make some decisions. So by addressing all of these together, we're trying to come up with a concept and a price where we're going to strategically fix this park and then identify the next and try to, in my sense, try to do something for each one of these parks and put them on a year schedule and say, okay, we're gonna do this one, then the next one, then the next one, and kind of get into a cycle where we're starting to make all these improvements because candidly, some of the infrastructure issues have not been addressed in the past.
So this, now that we have the design, and what's our next step? Is that to go out?
That's a sequel of a dog park.
Right, we're, we're looking at, um, pricing and obviously, um, basically solicit, solicit our professionals to find out if someone has a better idea or obviously prior experience that we can look at from another community. I don't think that this is one of those things that we need to reinvent the wheel.
No, we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
I think we just need to go either...
Five engineers, we don't need...
Yeah, we need to go find a wheel that works for us.
We need to go find a town with a successful dog park and, and just copy what they've...
Well, that's the thing, I mean, we've been talking about this for a while now. We know we have a lot of folks that really are interested in this, so I'm just trying to understand, like, what do we do next?
Right, I, well, the one thing's...
What have we done? It looks like we have some sample design.
Yes, we do.
And you've talked about, we're gonna do the bathrooms, and we know that's a real issue. So I'm just saying to kind of expedite this process. What would we be doing next? We could tell the public, but they can wait to hear.
I'm gonna meet with the, uh, finance committee, identify how much money we're gonna put in the pot, um, for this year's, to fund these projects, um, if successful, um, because I have some cost analysis of the approximation without going out to bid, but I think comfortable with those numbers. Once, obviously, approved, we're gonna pursue this because obviously, um, this started before my tenure, but it, you know, we're, we're, we're in year two here, and we need to move forward. Um, it's the right thing for the community, it's the right thing for the council, and, and someone wants to see some action, you know, move forward that we're actually gonna address and get done.
So can we make a commitment that hopefully by next council meeting, we'll have an update for the public on where we are?
Well, I, I, if I can get the planners to line, that, that will be my goal.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't want to make promises I can't keep, so...
I know, we're just hearing from a lot of folks. We have, we have been putting it off, so I think maybe, even if we just status it at each of these meetings to show that we're making some progress would be a good thing.
Understood.
Thank you.
Um, my next item is, um, new ordinances for state code regulations. And Mr. Kleiman, um, started a vacation, so John Napolitano is gonna amaze us with how to explain these new ordinances and how they're gonna affect the city and how we're gonna implement them. Uh, sir, you are up, and I'll be over here with the...
John, is your mic, is your mic on?
All right, there you go. All right, sorry. So as you, Mayor, may not be aware, at the beginning of the year, uh, this, this, this Senate passed a new law regard, regarding how towns do performance guarantees and maintenance bonds on projects. It limited, in some respects, what you could buy, require maintenance bonds, and it also, uh, added some new areas that you could do. One is when you give a temporary certificate of occupancy now, you can ask for a bond for one hundred and twenty percent of the remaining work from the builder in order to get his TCO. So what our office did was... So what our office did was, we looked at your existing ordinances, we found that the guarantees were all in different places, they were in three different areas already. So what Steve did with Catherine Kim in our office was, they put together one new section called Section 96, which codifies in your ordinances the new law. It also, the new ordinances also, thank you very much, the new ordinances, what they do now is go and remove from the existing ordinances and refers them to Chapter 76. So all the ordinance, all the provisions are in one place, so it's easier for people to locate. My understanding is that your departments have already been implementing and acting on this because this is the law now, even though your ordinance hasn't caught up yet. So what this does is catches your ordinances up with the statute.
So basically, we'd be running under state statute?
Right, that's the whole goal.
Could we add to that, to a state statute?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean. You can't, there are...it limits to you what you can ask for guarantees on, you know, it's got to be things that are going to be dedicated to the city.
Right.
Things that are in the developers' agreement that they're required to build, that kind of stuff, sewer pipes, that kind of stuff, so it limits...
Talking about things like time limits and stuff of that nature.
That'll have to get back to you on, just because, like I said, this was drafted by Steve and Catherine in my office in accordance with the statute. So my suggestion is I will talk to them. I don't know that you can make a modification like that, that's not already in your existing ordinances on time framing for buildings and stuff, so...
I thought there was like a third section there that talked about something new that would enable you to, you know, performance money, if, for example, if you, you know, permits were issued and work stopped.
Yeah, there is...
Be able to do that before.
They can post, I'm just trying to see, I had them send me...
Maybe that's something they didn't look into, because that would be something very important.
They sent me a bunch of stuff to try to get smart in a quick period of time.
Well, they're just introductions, so that's something, I mean, we'd need to find out before we adopt it.
Okay, let's see, if you give me a couple of minutes, I will see if I can find anything about timing on this.
I think it was the final section of the bill.
Okay.
Talked about it.
I actually have the bill.
I think we can...
Yeah, we can do it offline.
Sure.
If we introduce it and then we...they have to be adopted anyway.
Right.
Okay, and my last item is that, previous to this meeting starting, the mayor and council members met with the Lions Club International to start a program called Recycle For Your Site. Basically, we were presented with this handy dandy box that has a hole in it for people to put their eyeglasses, reading or prescription glasses in, to forward this to, obviously, people of need for eyeglass wear. So it's a positive program, obviously the city supports anything that we can do to help our fellow man or woman, and this program, I think, will, obviously will serve. So I just got the box today, tomorrow we'll install it in the lobby and hopefully we'll have great success. And that would conclude the city manager's report.
Thank you. With that, I need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. Good evening. Ian Pagna, City of New Barbados Township, City of New Barbados, New Jersey, saying hello to my Hackensack friends in Canada and in Pennsylvania, direct relatives of Oratam, who never relinquished the right to use the mark, you just adopted it. And the reason why I've made this change is because this city doesn't have the honor to use that man's image or that tribe's name. Ted, on March 1st, I went to the city clerk's office to collect this Oprah request. On the way there, I asked to speak to you and I sat in your office and three times I kindly asked if you were ready, but instead of having your representatives ask me to either leave or just wait quietly, you called the police. And in doing so, two cops arrived, one with his hand on his gun, sitting, standing in back of the other guy who was harassing me, who if I had a mental problem, I would have opened up on him. I took a video of the whole thing, they accessed my...somehow, it's edited. Any expert will look at this and say, somebody messed with that video. Now, I'm not saying this for me, I'm just saying this for the performance of the police department. And I spoke to the, I spoke to Captain Foley, she says, oh, that's just their training, you know? So that calls into question everything the police did. We have a lot of good cops, I respect the law. I've hung out with Native American elders all over the country who live by the law in their heart. My grandfather lived by the law in his heart, right? This is, city is never going to go anywhere if this kind of activity continues, the people, for people in power to abuse their power. And I've warned you that there were still elements of past administrations trying to refill the police department's things and refill people on the police department to gain back control. And that may be true, but also it calls into question what, if these seven officers were set up, who knows who they were? Who knows if they were told to do that? Who knows if there was an erift? I mean, everything in this city is in question. And I really wish you would change the name of this city because you're doing a great people, a great dishonor. Something has to be changed. There is no reason...I caught this officer in a lie, I had it on tape. He said he went to, he called the city clerk's office and said, no, it's not ready, it won't be ready for a week, and that was March 1st, and it states stamped March 1st, ready for pickup. They called me to pick it up. And they're not doing their job, they're not doing their job. All they do is arrest you for asking for assistance, asking for them to help enforce the law. Ted, that was a wrong thing. Thank you, Mr. Pagna. You should have had them ask me. Next, please.
Good evening. Two things. Number one, I'm very glad that the council is entertaining this presentation on solar energy. I think it can be, it's going to take study, it can be done incrementally, and I'm glad we're doing it. The second issue is I feel like a gadfly, but I feel compelled to raise it. We've had illegal parking on our street by PSCNG for a long time. I have contacted the police, I took pictures of it and sent it to traffic control, it is still happening. It's a truck, it's on Clarendon and Prospect, they, it parks illegally constantly. It's against ordinance and it's just not acceptable. Parking is tight, I don't think any corporation or any private business should have a right to park anywhere they want, you know, on public streets. And I would like it taken care of. I never see tickets, obviously no one's doing anything, and it's most irritating.
I'm sorry, sir, the street was Clarendon...
Clarendon and Hamilton.
Hamilton.
And it's a PSCNG truck and I sent a picture of the truck and the plate to traffic management control.
Thank you.
Richard Solik, Hackensack, New Jersey. My comments or questions pertain to the medical center, so I guess I'll direct my comments to the deputy mayor, would that be appropriate?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Deputy Mayor Sims, why was Resolution 208-18 pulled? Why was it tabled? That's the one that set aside, purported to set aside Resolution 246-16, Medical Center, the original developers' agreement from 1996. Can you clarify that for me? What does that mean?
Do you want me to answer?
Whoever can answer.
Okay, I thought you directed directly to...
Well, I did, he was deputy mayor as well.
Yes, we've been in negotiation with the hospital, with the medical center for, oh, quite a while now, looking into the prospect of them building a new tower. And there came a point in time where we were going back and forth with a particular agreement with them, and it may have caused an impact to that prior settlement agreement. We have since resolved that issue, so it is no longer in conflict with that particular agreement, and that's why it was...
This, the agreement, which I was very happy to see that was on until it got pulled, because last year you collected 4.7, over 4.7 million, that's the second largest tax producer, it's a good portion of your municipal budget. And the, I won't say sucker move, that's what I'm thinking, the host community bars that they tried to force upon you guaranteed 3.4 million. No one's going to spin that that was a good deal. And you may remember, there was some dialogue and I brought it to, because no one had any idea about the developers' agreement from 1996. Former city attorney Carver quote on July 7th, "I'm not going to let that happen, Mr. Solik." And I hope you live up to that, please rescind it. It's important that you rescind it. You still may have jeopardy under it because you endorsed something that Mr. Trost had already signed. It's very important to put your best foot forward on this, it's a lot of money. Thank you.
We'll be, we expect to be having more information on this at our next council meeting, so next council meeting, we will be having some news and hopefully we'll be able to share with it. We'd be happy to see you, Rick.
Regina de Pasco, Parker Avenue. Atlantic Street Park, I happened to be down there last week, I don't know, it's parked at the meter, and I put money in the meter, where the sign was at the entrance to the park, you know, no dogs.
Mm-hmm.
Woman walks by with her dog, goes to the grass, the point. I don't think there's a sign there.
We just installed such.
You just did, because I had mentioned it to somebody.
We needed more stuff.
But I'm sitting there and I'm like, she walks past the sign that says, no dogs, that you can't go in, and she put down there. She did clean up, but still, yeah, okay. Garbage pickup, all right, I'm glad it's twice a week, but in my neighborhood, they don't know that sanitation works on holidays. So started it Memorial Day. Our normal pickup is not on Monday, so nobody in my neighborhood realized that they should have put their garbage out on Memorial Day. So they put it out on Tuesday, that was the normal pickup day, and it sat there till Thursday because they didn't know. So starting it on a holiday week, not such a great...I prefer you start in the beginning of May. This way, people buy Memorial Day, they got it down. They may get it by Labor Day at this point, but maybe not because this, which, first of all, I had a problem with, I got two at my house, they're not, these are not sent to the taxpayers, they're not sent to the address, these are sent to voters again. That's a problem, okay? Why can't you just send it to residents at an address? Because I got two, one addressed to my family and one addressed to a family member that has a different last name, okay? So I got two of them. But then I look at it, twice a week garbage pickup begins May 28th, routes 1 to 5, South of Central, every Monday and Wednesday. It's wrong, it's not Monday and Wednesday. Who did this? The same, the same company that was your PR person, that's our PR person, that, it's inaccurate. I mean, it's propaganda, absolutely, but if you're going to give dates and schedules, please do them right. Now, my 1 to 5, they're probably all confused. And it says it ends September 7th, I don't know, what day of the week is the 7th? I don't look at that, what, in the calendar, but, because that's what I was wondering, when, do we go the whole week after Labor Day? This is so confusing, if you could just do twice a week garbage all year long, we wouldn't be going through this, wouldn't have, but for this to go out, first of all, like I said, I was annoyed that it went to voters, the voter list, all right? It didn't go to, I think it's a lot cheaper if you just send it bulk to residents, I don't know, at every address, save us a little money somewhere, but that it's wrong. Monday and Wednesday for my neighborhood, that just, and like I said, starting it on a holiday, that was not a good idea.
Thank you. Let me, one second, Ms. Nustater, thank you. We will get to the bottom, I don't know how the wrong date got put in there, but let's get to the bottom of it and find out where the fault lies so we can fix that, please.
And we should always look into, if there's alternate mechanisms for mailing, that's going to be less expensive and more beneficial to the city. Ted, please, you know, make sure that the PR firm looks into Regina's advice.
Yep.
It's less money, we should do it.
Ma'am?
Good evening, Ruth Bauer Nustater, hello everyone. Just regarding that same issue, we didn't get the blue, that blue folder, we got something that was on our doorknob, a heavy piece of cardboard that gave us the dates for garbage and for recycling, which I also, I mean, it was very nice to get, but that also seems to me to be quite expensive. It's a very heavy piece of cardboard and I don't know if it's necessary, so that might be looked into as well. So the reason I'm coming up is, thank you for listening to the presentation that we had on solar panels and eliminating fossil fuels. One of the reasons that I'm so interested in it is because Hackensack is the county seat and we have, what, 70 municipalities?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yep.
We're huge and we're also one of the most wealthy counties in the country, so we're pretty important. And I think if Hackensack does something about this, if we are a role model for solar panels and even single plastic use, that's another issue, plastic bags, all of these things that are affecting our environment, and we actually do something and the mayors of all the other municipalities get together, we can be a role model and we can start making a big difference in the state of New Jersey. And I would, I think that that's a very admirable goal to look into, so I would encourage all of you and if there's anything I can do to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nustater.
Okay, I'm back and I happened to pick this up from Boswell Engineering and they put a price tag of $100,000 on lighting. You could light Yankee Stadium for that price. $100,000 on lighting for that park? And then, I don't know, Mr. City Manager, you said after the fact, but you said we're going to look into seeing what parks need, the priorities. I know all my parks, half of them don't have a basketball net, they don't even have a net on the basketball. This park has been getting first treatment forever, has a great program going on by Mr. Sims, and it gets everything, and milling and resurfacing and it's, all he needs is to be resurfacing, you don't have to put this mega coating on, we're not professional wall players, and he's going to get his $8 million indoor thing. So $100,000 for lights? Go look at all the parks. I don't have any nets in Polyphide, the nets are broken in Columbus, every, they don't even have nets, and you're spending all this money on lighting. It's obscene. The dog, Larry, or Ordinance, whatever you want to call it, who's going to stand there and watch the dogs poop? Are we going to have a poop brigade? I mean, who, how are you, we're short policemen, we can't even, you want to have a curfew for the parks at 10 o'clock, we're short policemen and you're going to, you only can get a ticket if somebody sees you, sees you go to the bathroom. Who's going to enforce it?
Mrs. Salvo, we have to do something to stop the dogs...
I know that, but you know what happens on it, and I know something else that you should know.
And there's other, there's other devices being put in place that will also control the dogs.
Okay, you're going to shoot the dog as he passes, I mean, really, I mean, actually. So anyway, also for the dog park, the people that want it, they know a lot about dog parks, I think you should form a committee and don't, and just let them be part of it because they've been to other parks and they know how it works.
You do know that we've done all of that.
We have?
Oh, yes.
All right, you have a park, because they've been asking for four years, that Stipe Park has, talk about parks that have nothing, Stipe Park has nothing, and then we're spending all this money on one park. And tennis courts, are we for real? What, how are you going to have tennis and basketball and everything else in Carver Park? You have, you have the water thing, you have the basketball thing, and that's max, that's more than any other park has. I mean, Columbus doesn't have any of that stuff, none of the other parks do. So to give, and you know, and all fairness, you can't even go by what the recreation says because Mr. Sims is their boss, is he going to go? If Mr. Sims wants what he wants, he's going to get, are these people on this recreation board all, are going to go against him? This is all stacked. So take, set back that way. So, take, set back, get Wayne to do, to check out Columbus Park, it's really, really in need of being fixed, and let's give everybody basketball, just give them the nets, they don't even have nets.
If we put up nets and they tear them down the next day, we could put them up every day.
What do you mean tear them down? How are we gonna tear them down?
You think those nets aren't pulled down by, unfortunately, the abuse? Every week, I come into work and I see pictures of wood chips dumped in bathrooms and all of this.
Well, again, we need, well, Carver Park is a mess too. Again, we need marshals, if you wanna really monitor your parks, you should have marshals and everyone. At 10 o'clock, I'll have you spend a...
Thank you, Mrs. Salvo. Next, please.
My bad back, I'm sitting there. Peter Marcusanti, Davis Avenue. You'll be happy to know, Dave, that my understanding of basketball is that every 24 seconds, 10 people jump up and down, and that's all I know about basketball. I just wanna be brief, I have something for Mr. Ernberg here, it's just a picture of 48 Davis Avenue. During the storm in March, there was a tree that came down, the whole root wall uprooted the sidewalk, the slab was lifted, the utility company put in the poles during the storm, DPW took the tree away during the storm, was really heroic activity, but the barriers have been on the sidewalks since that first week in March, and I thought it was worse than it was, but when I took pictures today, the sidewalk is now a little bit flatter, so they must've come through and did some work on it, but there's more work to be done, so I'll give that to Ted.
Thank you.
I think it's, I think it's at a point where, if they're gonna plant a replacement in October, probably they really have to compact the dirt, and I think that's a responsibility to the city, although homeowners are responsible for roots raising slabs, if a whole tree comes down in a storm and the root wall uproots the whole sidewalk, I would think that the city would, would be responsible for taking care of that. Mr. Kepania mentioned a couple of things at the last meetings, and he didn't mention it tonight, but I wanna follow up with some things that he said. One of them, since we have the outdoor cafe discussion on music, one of the issues, and you saw it in the paper, I think it was Engelwood, with the wood burning and coal burning ovens that are emitting smoke and particulate matter, and as we move forward with perhaps more restaurants in Hackensack that may be involved in those kind of ventures, it's probably something that we're gonna have to address by code somehow, and I just wanna bring that to your attention, the appropriate scrubbers, and it's probably something that really even shouldn't be grandfathered, if it's a serious health issue, something that probably we should go after and find out if we can monitor what's going on and how that can be, how that can be improved. The other thing he mentioned, and this has been a pet peeve of mine for a long time, and that is the impossible situation of traffic on Upper Main Street between Spring Valley and, let's go as far as Zabriskie Street. The fact that we have the northern end of the street from about Orchard Street on up, there's no parking on either side. The lower portion from Orchard Street down to Spring Valley, there's parking on both sides. And I stood out there today, at great personal risk, and took some pictures. I wanted to get better pictures of oncoming New Jersey transit buses, but I bailed out. But I have a few things here that I'll give to Mr. Ernberg, with just a couple of suggestions. I only made one copy, so maybe if you wanna look at it, you can pass it around, but I do think it's a very dangerous situation with people getting out of cars, and every time I go down there, I try to creep along, because you never know when somebody's gonna swing open a door, and they're running in for a pizza, they're running into the Chinese restaurant. There was a woman there today when I was coming here, who had her door open, and she was loading some stuff in the car from the street side, and there's no way that large vehicles can get down that street without straddling the center line, and that's a problem. So, just something to consider, you know, as we move forward, as the city's doing some wonderful things, great DPW work, great work in the parks, cutting the lawns, et cetera, et cetera, can't say enough good things. So, keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna go watch the mess start a winning streak, I'll see you next week.
Anybody else in the public? Seeing none, motion closed in public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, anybody from the council have any comments before we go in back? Need a motion to go into closed session?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. Whereas the mayor and council wishes to discuss the following issues: personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days, for such time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality. Do you have anything? Did Steve give you anything?
Did he give you any lawsuits to speak about tonight?
None in particular right now.
Okay, and anything we bring up in the back, we will repeat out here.
Okay.
Okay, if it comes up.
That's it.
All right, see everybody at 8 o'clock, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
We need a motion to close the executive session.
Okay, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
And then we need a motion to close the...
Offer.
Need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Okay, this meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and JSA 10 colon 4 dash 6, that's the notice of which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Yes. Go ahead.
In executive session, the council discussed the following litigations: Mural versus the city, Luna Diaz versus the city, and Ziza versus the city.
Thank you. Okay.